Good evening and welcome to the council budget meeting for Thursday, November 21st, 2024. Please rise for the playing of the national anthem and a moment of reflection.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land, true patriot love in all of us command. Car ton bras s'est porté les pays, il s'est porté la croix. Ton histoire est une épopée des plus brillants exploits. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
I will now look to councillor MacPherson to read the land acknowledgement.
The land on which council meets today is the traditional territory of the Hodnashone, Anishnaabak, Anishnaabak, and Adewan Drunk, and the Mississaugas of the credit First Nation peoples, many of whom continue to live and work here today. This territory is covered by the Upper Canada Treaties and is within the land protected by the Dish with One Spoon Wampum Agreement. Today, this gathering place is home to many indigenous peoples made up of First Nation, Inuit, and Métis. The Dish with One Spoon Wampum Agreement should remind us of our responsibility to ensure that the dish, the territories on which we live and work, is never emptied, and that we take care of the land and its inhabitants in a way that ensures its future sustainability.
Thank you, councillor MacPherson. We will move to Chair's report, and I have two issues I want to address, particularly since we don't have another council meeting for a while. So number one, I would like to ask Director Douglas, the Director of Finance, to share with the public and council how taxpayers should go about paying their water bills and their tax bills during the ongoing postal strike.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Property owners will still be responsible for ensuring that their property tax and water payments and parking fines are paid by their due dates, and regular penalties will continue to apply for late payments. Final property tax notices were mailed on June 7th of 2024, and interim property tax notices will be mailed early in February 2025, and optimistic that the Canada postal strike will be resolved by then. The final installment for the 2024 property taxes was due on September 27th. However, there were some supplemental tax bills that have due dates of November 29th and December 31st, so we're advising residents that do have those supplemental property tax payments that they do not send their payments in the mail. They can drop their payments off here, they can pay at Citizens First, and they can also pay through their financial institutions. We do also offer the ability to pay property taxes, and water bills, and parking fines can be paid online using a Visa or MasterCard through the city's third-party provider, Paymentis. So you can visit stcatherine.ca, pay online. Payments can also be made by cash, cheque, or debit, or in-person at Citizens First during our regular business hours. With regards to water bills, we do send out water bills every two weeks, and we are working to have those hand-delivered to the residents within the city during the current postal disruption.
Thank you, Director Douglas. The other issue I wanted to address for everyone's benefit is to remind everybody that this weekend, Saturday, November 23rd, the launch of Let It Glow: A Celebration of Light will occur. So we want to thank the community for your excitement and support. This event has become a beloved holiday tradition and worth thrill to share with you. We hear lots of good comments about it, but I want to add that to ensure the safety and longevity of the displays, we kindly ask that you do not touch or move the lights or displays, and do not plug any electrical cords. And I'm saddened to report that we have had occasions of people in Rennie Park in Port de Lusy plugging the lights in when they're not supposed to, in case you've seen the lights on, like I saw them tonight, they're not supposed to be on. And this is vandalism, there was some vandalism downtown as well. So I ask if anybody sees anybody damaging these lights, which everybody enjoys so much, to please report it to the police if you can. Thank you. We will now move to the adoption of the agenda. Deputy Clerk, are there any amendments to the agenda?
So there are no amendments to the agenda, and there are no additional items of correspondence. And just as an announcement, in the chambers tonight, we do have councillors Williamson, Dodge, MacPherson, Phillips, Kushner, and Stevens. And online, we have councillors Miller, Townsend, and Lindell.
Thank you, Minister Deputy Clerk. So can I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Councillor Phillips, a second, or councillor Dodge, all in favor? That's carried. Adoption of the minutes. We have minutes from October 23rd and from November 6th meetings. Can I have a councillor move to adopt those minutes? Councillor Stevens, can I have a second? Councillor Williamson? So the motion is that council adopt the minutes of the regular council budget meeting held on October 23rd, 2024, and that council adopt the minutes of the regular council budget meeting held on November 6th, 2024. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? Seeing none, as a reminder that councillors are required to submit written statements of declarations via the online form. So we will move to number five, consent reports. My understanding is no reports have been requested to be moved to discussion. Does any councillor want to wish to move a report to discussion? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Councillor Phillips? No second required for that, so the motion is that council approve the consent agenda, save and accept those items brought forward to discussion. So I will look to the deputy clerk to read the list of consent reports and call the recorded vote.
There are four reports on tonight's consent agenda. Item 6.1, Financial Management Services 2024 Grant Funding Update. Item 6.2, Financial Management Services Capital Project Report for Third Quarter ended September 30th, 2024. Item 6.3, Financial Management Services 2024 Third Quarter Operating Financial Update. And item 6.4, Legal and Clerk Services Council Correspondence. Apologies, I just have to enter voting mode right now so we can vote. Councillor Phillips?
Yes.
Councillor Miller?
Yes.
Councillor MacPherson?
Yes.
Councillor Lindell?
Yes.
Councillor Kushner?
Yes.
Councillor Dodge?
Yes.
Councillor Ratzoff?
Yes.
Councillor Stevens?
Yes.
Councillor Townsend?
Yes.
Councillor Williamson?
Yes.
And Chair Garcia?
Yes.
And that's carried.
Okay, discussion reports, there are none, and there were no delegations registered to speak to the budget's re-adoption today. So first, water and wastewater budget amendments, there were none. So we will move to number 10, which is capital budget amendments. And 10.1 is capital budget amendment number one, which is self-watering flower baskets in Port de Lusy Heritage District. And I will be making that motion, so I will ask Vice Chair Dodge to take the chair.
Can I have a second for councillor Garcia's motion, please? Councillor Williamson? Does anyone have any questions? Councillor Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Just some brief background for the reason for this amendment. Councillor Williamson and I have asked for at least two years now to get the flower baskets that are assigned to the Port de Lusy Heritage District spread out along Main Street so that they give better, bigger impact with all the visitors that we get. And staff has been unable to do so, so we asked for a staff report identifying the reason, but also recommending how can we make sure that that doesn't happen in 2025. So staff recommended that to do a proper job, we needed an additional 10 baskets, which is what this is calling for. And it's in the capital budget because these baskets have long lives, so they're an extended-life item, and therefore qualifies capital. And also, we are asking that it would be funded from the Civic Project Fund because it's a one-time item, and these baskets should last significant amount of time. And there is no impact on the operating budget because the staff had told us that they can handle any extra watering and so on for just 10. So that is the background, and I hope everybody will support that.
Councillor Williamson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to add to what councillor Garcia has said, really, to me, this should have been included in the budget. And this is one of those items that the local tier and municipal level of government is actually responsible for, for greening, for beautification, for landscaping. And during my tenure on council, the number of gardeners and amount of, proportionately the amount of money that's been allocated to greening and to beautification stuff has been cut drastically over the years. So this is putting it, I guess you could say, putting a little bit back in, or maybe just evening the playing field a little bit to add to some of the aesthetic appearance of our neighborhoods. And I'll be pleased to also support the 10 extra baskets in Merritt and Ward. Thank you.
Councillor Stevens?
So it's just questions only, or can, is that what we're doing? Okay, I just, my thoughts on this is, I see there's another one coming up too for Merritt and Ward as well. And the thing is, what excludes the other wards from having them? If we're gonna do it in one or two wards, then why don't, why doesn't every single ward get a beautification thing in order to do it? So, and then now we're looking at $60,000 for six wards, so why Port de Lusy should have prettier flowers than Grantham Ward, or St. George's, or Merritt? So I won't support this for that reason alone, that it's just that ward's specific and not across the city.
Thank you, councillor Stevens. Councillor Townsend?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. My question is, I guess to councillor Garcia, I always appreciate that we deal with this on an annual basis. My question is, is why do we deal with this every year? Why not, why are we not just including this in the budget, seeing as we know that it's something that people in their ward care about? I guess through you to staff, I'm just trying to understand why this, why we deal with this every budget year.
Through you, Madam Chair. So we do have an annual budget for flower baskets in Port de Lusy, and this is over and above what is allowed in that budget. The budget is set. We purchase as many baskets as we can with the budget that we have. Last year, we got favorable prices, we were able to get actually some additional baskets hanging in the area. But to meet the expectations of the residents in the area, it would require some additional baskets that would be carried forward in the budget from this year on.
Okay, I'm just wondering if, I'm looking at the motion as it's worded, and I'm in support of it, I'm just wondering if there are a way we can just have it in the budget on an annual basis so that the councillors in Port don't have to come back every year asking for something that should be just a basic need within, especially in Port de Lusy. Certainly, I'd love to have some in, you know, St. George's Ward and on Facer Street, but I do understand the importance of Port de Lusy as it is a popular tourist destination, whether it be for rowing or for the beaches down there. So I'm just wondering to, I guess to the mover, if there's a way we can have this so they don't have to come back every year asking for this.
Oh, God. Through you, Madam Chair. Once this is added to the budget this year, it will go on in the subsequent budgets going forward.
That's wonderful news, and I just, I'm hoping that my colleague councillor Garcia is in favor of that as well. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. That's my understanding as well, councillor Townsend, that once we add these, again, they are long, long-life items, so they will be there for next year and year beyond.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Townsend. Councillor Phillips?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Definitely support this. I guess the reason it's in, and I know Merritt and Request is coming up soon, and they are basically two very commercial areas in town where a lot of people frequent it. As I made mention earlier this summer, the downtown gardens were incredible this year, and I look forward to having something similar in Port de Lusy, which is a very busy tourist place for all of St. Catherine's, and Merritt, where there's a lot of people who are traveling up and down Hartzell Road. To beautify the city makes people proud of their city, and that's what we're all about. And would I like to have them in Grantham? Sure, I'd like to have them in Grantham, but it's not the tourist place that these other wards are. As far as Facer Street is concerned, that's up to the councillors, whether they of another year want to apply for something like this, that's up to them, but definitely, definitely support this.
Thank you, councillor Phillips. Councillor Ratzoff?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, through you. I also think this is a great idea, and I'm glad my colleague here mentioned the flowerbed, the flowers in our downtown, because we're, I'm a downtown ward councillor, and we do have some great, great hanging baskets, and I'd get in trouble from the businesses down there if I didn't mention that. We have more than Port de Lusy, but they pay for half of it. So maybe if Grantham wants some flower baskets, we can come up with that type of arrangement. So, thanks, Chair.
Thank, thank you. Seeing no further questions or comments, I'll look to the deputy clerk for the recorded vote.
Just as an announcement before we vote, just as a reminder to councillors, when you're speaking, if you can make certain your microphones directly in front of your mouth, if it's off to the side like this on YouTube, they don't really hear it as well, so if you can just make a point of positioning the microphone, that would be helpful. And on the vote, Chair Garcia?
Yes.
Councillor Williamson?
Yes.
Councillor Townsend?
Yes.
Councillor Stevens?
Counselor Stevens?
No.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Phillips?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor McPherson?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Kushner?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Dodge?
Yes.
And that's carried.
Thank you, Counselor Dodge, and we're switching chairs here because the next amendment is 10.2, which is a capital budget amendment number two, forestry delivery model and report request. And I have Counselor Dodge moving this, and secondary, Counselor McPherson. And I believe the motion will be on the screen. And Counselor Dodge, you want to speak first or last, or? Last, okay. Are there any other councillors that want to speak to this forestry motion? Counselor Kushner?
Thank you, Chair. I'm not in favor of this motion. We're talking to staff and staff giving us our report earlier in the season. We're not, we haven't fulfilled the vacancies that we have in the forestry department, so to invest in equipment on the hope that people will get hired to use it, to me, is ridiculous, because if we're gonna buy equipment, it could sit there, so by the time we hire and use it, it might not be new anymore. So I just can't see purchasing equipment for something that we don't have the people to use it, and we haven't fulfilled the existing vacancies that we have, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Stevens. Counselor Kushner?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. When staff originally proposed what the cost would have been, I was not supportive of that, but now with these modifications, I am supportive. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will move to Counselor Ratliff.
Thank you, Chair. Through you, just a few comments. One, you know, the saying goes that it's never too early to plant a tree, and so I'm happy to see that we're, we're making progress with our forestry department. I'm also happy to see, you know, when we originally saw these numbers, as Counselor Kushner said, they were, or alluded to, they were a lot higher, and so I'm happy to see that, you know, staff and management, or management and staff are working together, and that these prices have come down significantly from what they were projected to be. And to Counselor Stevens' point, equipment takes a long time to come. You know, since COVID, sourcing these types of equipment timelines have lengthened significantly. And I know from the Transit Commission, you know, you order a bus, and you don't expect to see it for a couple of years in some cases. So the sooner we get this in the budget, the better. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Ratliff, and Counselor Williamson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a really good opportunity to demonstrate some leadership. Oftentimes, staff demonstrates that leadership, and this is an opportunity for council to stand up and to say that we value our urban forest canopy and that we're willing to invest in it. Some, you know, we do a lot of talking, but this is an opportunity to actually back up our words with some action, so I'm glad that this has come forward. Thank Counselor Dodge for showing leadership on this, and I'm definitely happy to support it.
Thank you, Counselor Williamson. Any other councillors? Seeing none, so I will go to Counselor Dodge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that I'd like to thank staff for working with me on making this amendment, and I don't really have anything else to add to this, other than the, in speaking with staff, the last little part that was put in red on the bottom, just so that people can see that as well.
Thank you for that. So you're adding that as direction to staff at the end of your motion? And so I will ask Director Smith two questions. First of all, regarding implementation, can he please comment on the timing of purchasing equipment and hiring new people and so on? And also on Counselor Dodge, Counselor Dodge's direction about procuring, moving forward with the procurement right away?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'll ask Director Douglas to speak to the second question about procurement, but I will speak to the first about implementation. If council passes this amendment tonight, then the first step would be to, to purchase, put the tender out to purchase the equipment. As was alluded to, you're talking a year and a half to two years probably to get the equipment. The situation is getting better, but we don't expect that it would get that much better. And then we would time the hiring of the new staff once we got a delivery date for the new equipment. So it's usually about a two-month process to hire staff, so we were expecting the equipments will start the hiring process two months before the equipment arrives, so that we can try to match the equipment and the staff as closely as possible.
Thank you, Director. And before we go to Director Douglas, can you comment on the, since it was brought up before, on the status of the staff that we had already previously approved and we're trying to hire?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. As I stated previously, we did have some negotiations with the union. We entered into a letter of understanding with the union executive last week, I believe it was. It was signed off by both parties, which was created the forestry labor position. So the vacant arborist two position, if the person has not been hired already, there is going to be an offer going out shortly. The arborist ones, we are interviewing the first week of December. The forestry labor positions were actually posted today, so I expect that we will be interviewing for the, before Christmas. So I generally expect that we will have the vacancies filled very early in the New Year, sometime during January.
Thank you for that, Director. Director Douglas, can you comment on that direction to staff at the end of the motion?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. To the councillor with regards to the procurement, as indicated in the motion, once the budget had adoption, readoption process has been concluded, the funds would be approved and the procurement team could move forward in alignment with municipal works in procuring this equipment.
Thank you, Director Douglas. I have Counselor Dodge for a second time?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say that, you know, one of our goals is about planting trees and making our forestry canopy better, and we keep talking about that, and we have made some changes and we're striving forward. And this is another step towards reaching that goal and attaining that goal to, you know, green our cities, so I'm hoping everyone can support this.
Thank you, Counselor Dodge. Are there any other comments? If not, I'll, I just have two comments I wanted to make. Number one, I echo what Counselor Kushner said. I was very concerned with the first report that we got when we looked at a much larger amount that we will be committing to, because it included some areas that are not included in this motion at this time. We're certainly all for supporting getting to our canopy growth and getting back to 25% at some time. And I would like to add, for those on council who are fiscally conservatives like me, that I have checked, and the debt addition to, required for this motion will not put us above the limit that we have set as council policy. So with that, I will look to the deputy clerk to, for a recorded vote.
All right, just waiting for voting mode to open here. Counselor Dodge?
Yes.
Counselor McPherson?
Yes.
Counselor Kushner?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Phillips?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Stevens?
No.
Counselor Townsend?
Yes.
Counselor Williamson?
Yes.
And Chair Garcia?
Yes.
And that's carried.
Okay, thank you. We will move to 10.3, capital budget amendment number three, speed humps on Cumberland Street, Beach Haven Drive, and Beauregard Street. And moving the motion, I have Counselor Phillips, and seconded by Counselor Dodge. So the motion will be on the screen. Counselor Phillips, you want to speak first or last?
Chair, I'll speak first. Thank you, Chair. As, as councillors are aware, the area of, or this area has been a real concern in Port Weller because of the Sunset Beach traffic. The one road particular, Cumberland, which runs along the edge of Malcolmson Park, is packed every weekend and during the week. The side streets also can turn into a raceway. So this year, we had temporary speed humps on Cumberland that were used, and it did, they did the work. But unfortunately, we have to take them out, and it's my understanding that temporaries cannot be put back in, so we have to put in permanents from now on. This motion indicates that speed humps will go in at Cumberland and other streets, side streets, but before that happens, I would like the Transportation Department to canvas the residents in that area, to see after they've experienced the speed hump situation, if they still feel they're required. So this money will be spent if the community says yes, they want, but if all of a sudden, for whatever reason, they say no, it's, the situation has improved, that we don't want them, then obviously that money will not be required. So I ask, ask council to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Phillips. Do we have?
Sorry, we just forgot to exit voting mode last time, so just Counselor Williamson, I'm gonna ask you to turn off your mic, and then this way we can have the cue system back. So just waiting for the system here. So Counselor Williamson, you can activate again, and then we're good to go.
Or to staff or to the ward councillors, we're looking at five or so speed humps in this, with this $50,000?
Through Budget Chair, yes, we are looking at five speed humps.
I remember coming back from AMO in the summertime and drove through a couple Ottawa neighborhoods, and I must have driven over, seemed like 100, but probably more like 20 or 25. Is there a chance that as we implement, these are gonna become less expensive than $10,000 per hump? It just seems like fairly expensive investment for a hump. I just wonder, this is the, this is the cost, and this is what other municipalities are paying as well?
Through Mr. Budget Chair to the councillor, yes, this is the cost of installing asphalt speed humps. The city has normally installed concrete speed humps, which are more expensive than these. We are, because it is a secondary road, we are going to try using the asphalt speed humps in these locations.
Okay, thank you. I am supportive, I just am a little bit surprised at how expensive they are. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Williamson, and I have Counselor Stevens.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm glad that Counselor Phillips asked for a survey to go around first, because I know in certain areas of the city, people have got speed bumps and then they've regretted it. They do not like that, so just to go and put them in without input, I'm glad you've added that. If it's not needed, then this money will go back to what? Through you, the Chair, to finance?
Director Douglas?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to the councillor. What would, it would result would be a favorable variance in our capital budget, so it would remain there for future use for other speed bumps in other areas, and then when we reprioritize in the 2026 readoption process, we would look at if there's other areas or other needs in capital that could use those $50,000.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Director. Are there any other questions? Anybody online? Counselor Phillips, again, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to ensure that the, in this, in 10.1, in the report, the request that it indicates that the community will be canvassed prior to the speed humps being installed.
Thank you, Counselor Phillips, and I have a question for, I think for Director Smith. This makes sense, but I'm always confused as to what is acceptable for snow removal and what isn't, because we do have issues where residents have asked for temporary speed bumps, and we're told that they have to take them off for the winter, yet we see other cities like Toronto and other places where they have permanent ones like this, so.
Through you, Mr. Chair, or to you, Mr. Chair. So temporary speed humps that are the rubber speed humps that we put in do have to be removed for winter, because the snow plow would just rip them up when we go through. But permanent speed humps, we can snow plow around permanent speed humps. It does slow the snow removal down slightly, but we've learned to, as they've become more in fashion, we've learned to service them.
Thank you, Director, and to Director Matushu, I guess what Counselor Williamson was asking, so the cost of the temporary ones is a lot lower than putting in the permanent ones, or?
To Mr. Budget Chair, no, the temporary ones are cheaper. They're, they're just plastic speed bumps that we buy. These, what we're indicating here is that we are going to use asphalt speed bumps versus the concrete speed bumps that we've, we install on higher traffic roads.
Thank you. And just to, to Counselor Phillips, from experience, yes, canvassing the community is very important, because we've had situations in Port De Luzi Ward where residents have asked for speed bumps, and then they put in the temporary ones, and then they complain and they don't want them, and we have to remove them. So once they're permanent, they're there, so. Counselor Dodge?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I'm certainly supportive of this, and we did have speed humps temporarily in that area this past summer. I think that it's important that, you know, we think about the safety of our neighborhoods and trying to slow down traffic however we can. I think it's a good idea, so I'm certainly supportive of this, and glad that it was brought forward. I just have one quick question. I know that Counselor Phillips has mentioned it twice, and other people have mentioned it. Do we need to have it in the motion that the neighborhood would be canvassed before anything was installed? Like, does it need to be a direction of staff or anything in there, so that it's just a part of the motion?
It stays right at the beginning of the motion, that pending the results of engagement with the residents.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
I didn't see that.
Seeing no other comments, questions, I will move to ask the deputy clerk for a recorded vote.
Counselor Phillips?
Yes.
Counselor Dodge?
Yes.
Counselor Williamson?
Yes.
Counselor Townsend?
Yes.
Counselor Stevens?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor McPherson?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Kushner?
Yes.
And Chair Garcia?
Yes.
And that's carried.
Thank you, deputy clerk. So we will move to 10.4, capital budget amendment number four, self-watering flower baskets on Merritt Streets. And moving the motion, I have Counselor Lindell, and I assume Counselor Miller will second?
That's correct.
Okay. So Counselor Lindell, would you like to speak first or last?
I don't mind speaking first, because I think we've all said, when you made your motion, the things that need to be said in favor of it. We have the same situation on Merritt Street. We have a lot of people who go through Merritt Street, and I want to also thank Municipal Works, because they- because they do a fantastic job with the baskets that are up on Merritt Street. But they can't keep up with everything. They're too busy trying to make the rest of our city look as amazing as it does. So I think this will help, and with the parade that goes down there every year, it'll be a fantastic thing to help the Merritt Street area.
Thank you, Counselor Lindell. Are there any questions or comments? Now I have Counselor Kushner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Because of the presentation, short presentation by the counselor, I'm in support.
Thank you, Counselor Kushner. Okay, seeing no other questions or comments, I will ask the deputy clerk for a recorded vote.
Just need a quick second here for the system to enter voting mode. Counselor Lindell. Counselor Lindell.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Phillips.
Yes.
Counselor Ratzloff.
Yes.
Counselor Stevens.
No.
Counselor Townsend.
Yes.
Counselor Williamson.
Yes.
Counselor Dodge.
Yes.
Counselor Kushner. Counselor McPherson.
Yes.
And Chair Garcia.
Yes.
And that's carried.
Thank you, everyone. We will move to Number 11, which is Operating Budget Amendments. So we have covered that there were no amendments to the water and waste water budget. We've now just covered the four capital budget amendments, and we're moving... We have one Operating Budget Amendment, Number One, funding for the Rodman Art Institute of Niagara, or RAIN. And this is a motion by Counselor Phillips. And do I have a second there for that?
I'll second it, Chair.
Okay. Who was that? Okay. Thank you, Counselor Townsend. So the motion is on the screen. So Counselor Phillips, would you like to speak first or...
I guess Counselor Phillips is in, and Counselor Kushner, can you just press your microphone again? You don't want to speak anymore? Because you had... You were in the queue to speak. Did you want to re-enter the queue? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. No, no, not yet. You'll be speaking after Counselor Phillips. We just need you to enter the queue. Here.
Now that Counselor Kushner has given up what he's going to do, I'm not sure what I'm going to say. We had a presentation, as everyone knows, from the group, RAIN, asking for an extension of funding. We have a very valuable... Very valuable pieces of art that are being stored in a climate-controlled area at great expense. I was surprised at that amount of money that they have to spend. Plus, to keep the viability of a potential art gallery going. And they're asking for, as I... As you know, they're asking for continuance of funding. And that's why I think it's important if... We're going to give them a chance to bring home an art gallery, it's important that they receive some funding in order to keep that going. In my motion, I've indicated that I'm in favor of funding them for another year. And if they expect or want future funds, that next year, they would come back with a financial statement that Council can view indicating what money they've spent, what their... What grants they've received or anything like that. But for this year, this is to keep them going. This is what I've asked for.
Thank you, Counselor Phillips. Counselor Kushner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The letter that we received from the organizations in Skip was very convincing. Most of us are familiar with these organizations, and I think we're all very impressed by the good work they've done with not that much financing. And therefore, I would make an amendment that the 125,000 earmarked for Rodman be reduced to 60,000, and the remaining 65,000 be allocated to Skip, and that RAIN be invited to participate in the Skip programming. So the reason I came up with the 60,000 was that, as I understand it, is the storage of the art. And I think that's in some other cities. So I think we should continue with that. But we have to get some reports from RAIN, because I'm not sure exactly what they're doing. They've got 125,000 for a couple of years now. And when I look at that money, I think it could be better spent on successful organizations like Skip. And therefore, I make that amendment.
Thank you, Counselor Kushner. We'll have to check with Counselor Phillips to see whether that's friendly, I believe. But first of all, I wanted to go to Director Christie to check on the numbers you just mentioned. My understanding is that the storage, in fact, costs close to 70,000 a year?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, the storage costs are in the neighborhood of 70,000.
Then, Mr. Chair, I would change that to a higher number.
Thank you, Counselor Kushner. And for clarification for Council, again, you mentioned money that Council has allocated to RAIN before. It has been over three years, a total of 300,000. Can you confirm that, Director Christie?
Sorry, can you repeat the question, Counselor?
I said that my understanding is that we have already funded RAIN to the extent of a total of 300,000 over three years.
Through you, Mr. Chair, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. So Counselor Phillips, is Counselor Kushner's amendment friendly?
Yes, yes, it is. Because first and foremost, it's important that we maintain the quality of the artwork. There's... We've been told there's thousands and thousands of dollars' worth of artwork in this climate-controlled facility. And in my mind, first and foremost, that has to be protected. As far as the other monies that RAIN will be required to have in order to exist, again, they can apply to Skip like the other arts organizations, and that'll be up to them to do that. A question to our Director of Financial Management Services, can we do that, direct $25,000 to be added to the Skip program from the same source that I indicated coming out of my request?
Director Douglas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to the counselor. With regard to the Skip program, Council can make a decision to increase the funding if they choose. There is no guarantee who those funds would go to. If the Skip funds are increased, it goes through the Skip evaluation process.
Right.
I do want to point out to Council that Skip is already funded by approximately over half of the allocation from the Civic Project Fund already. So just want to point that out to Council as well.
And in the new year, I will be asking for a report on funding of Skip. It hasn't been funded, increased in funding for a few years, but that has nothing to do with tonight. I just wanted to warn you. Thank you. Yes, I'll accept that amendment.
Thank you, Counselor Phillips. And thank you, Director. Again, some clarification. So the motion as amendment should read that 70,000 in 2025 from the Civic Project Fund, and that the balance of 55, I guess, be added to a Skip for the 2025 year. So make sure that everyone understands that that is not immediate, because first of all, the Skip allocations have already been approved for this year. So when that... Those funds are added to Skip, then they would have to... Whoever applies, and as the Director pointed out, is not necessarily just going to RAIN, because everybody will have a chance to apply. And I believe the next intake will probably be around May. Director Christie? Yes. So, and it is just... We're talking about a one-year change for 2025. I think we have to look at, as Counselor Phillips has mentioned, potential increases to Skip. I know that we made a big increase to Skip about four or five years ago, and which was long overdue, and obviously, we're due for something else. But that is something that we will require a detailed staff report and all of Council to approve. So Counselor Williamson.
Chair, through you. I hope there's a little bit of flexibility in this number. If the actual cost of renting the climate-controlled facility is more than $70,000, I hope there's some flexibility to make sure that those costs are covered. Is there proviso that we could do that?
I don't know. Director Christie, can you comment?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I don't know the answer to that question, but I... Yeah. Sorry, I can get back to you with...
Sorry.
Yeah.
Well, go ahead, Counselor Ratzloff, yeah.
No, my suggestion would just be to make it 80,000 and say up to 80 in 2025, so that if there are more costs that go run over the 70,000 for storage. But I would want to tie some type of report to that, so that we could see that those overages are for the storage of the art.
Okay, Counselor Phillips, is that friendly to make it up to 80,000? If... Well, can we... Maybe it should be just enough to cover the cost of storage? Counselor Phillips?
Okay. My concern is if we bump it up to 80, that's the cost it's going to be. If somebody gets a hold of that number, oh, yeah, okay. We normally would be 70, but Counselor said 80, so we'll charge them 80. I think we leave it at 70 and see what the actual charge is. And if there is an overage, well, then I guess we deal with it in Council sometime. But I'd rather not go to the high end, because I'm afraid the high end is going to be the end. So no.
Through you, Mr. Chair, just a couple of things. So we've been made aware by RAIN that the annual storage costs are expected to... Bless you. Expected to increase by 5% annually. So please keep that in mind. The second thing is I just wanted to remind Council as well that a Skip review is scheduled. So we will be coming back to Council with additional information in 2025.
Thank you, Directors. Counselor Phillips, are we keeping it at 70 and 55? Is that what we're saying? Okay. And Counselor Kushner, do you want to speak again?
I just wanted to make a quick comment, Mr. Mayor. I was the Director of Rodman, and the artwork is now worth hundreds of thousands. It's worth multi-millions.
Thank you, Counselor Kushner. I agree. And Counselor Phillips, I would have a small addition, if I may, to the end of your motion, where you say that any future funding request be accompanied by a financial statement and forecast outlining fundraising and grant initiatives which have been undertaken. I would like to add, and that this forecast include their plan for sustainable funding sources for a permanent art gallery. Thank you.
As part of the... At the end where it says "and grant initiatives which have been undertaken", you can add that to the end of that sentence. No, to the end of "undertaken". And then I guess the word "and".
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from Council? Seeing none, I will ask the... Oh, sorry, Counselor McPherson, I missed you there.
That's all right. I'm missable, Mr. Chair. Just one, just with the information from Director Christie regarding the 5% increase. Five? Okay. Could we just bump it up to 73.5, just to cover the 5% increase that's going to occur? Not to keep...
I believe Counselor Phillips is saying that's friendly, so sure.
Yes.
So Sarah, you would have to adjust the 55, add 3.5 to the 70, and reduce the 55 by 3,500.
Thank you very much.
No?
That's all.
Okay. I think we're there. So now I will ask the deputy clerk for a recorded vote.
Just waiting for voting mode to be entered now. I feel like a lot of pressure is on Sarah there to do math quickly in front of everyone. So kudos to Sarah for the quick math. On the motion, Counselor Phillips.
Yes.
Counselor Townsend.
Yes.
Counselor Stevens.
Yes.
Counselor Ratzloff.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor McPherson.
Yes.
Counselor Lindell. Are you there, Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
You're having intern additions, right?
Counselor Kushner.
Yes.
Counselor Dodge.
Yes.
Counselor Williamson.
Yes.
And Chair Garcia.
Yes.
And that's carried.
Thank you, everybody. So we have addressed all the amendments. So we have a motion under 12.1, which was a motion that we would only table if the amendments were addressed. So the motion is 12.1 to shorten the budget amendment period. And first, before we have the motion by Counselor Dodge as vice chair, I will look to the deputy clerk for an overview of the next steps in the budget process.
Thank you, Chair Garcia. So the motion before Council next would be to end the budget amendment process. So under the new Strong Mayor legislation, Council has 30 days in which they can submit budget amendments. So this would have meant that the last day for Counselor to amend the budget would have been next Tuesday, which is Tuesday, November 26. By moving this motion, it will end the budget amendment period to be effective today. This will then allow the mayor to begin his 10-day veto period, the benefit of this being that the mayor can then issue any veto decisions effective tomorrow. And if the mayor chooses not to veto any amendments, then the budget will be deemed readopted effective tomorrow if the mayor were to do so. If the mayor were to veto any amendments, then that would allow Council then to vote by two-thirds to override the veto. by two-thirds to override the veto. If the mayor does veto an amendment, we will provide information to council on the process to override the veto. But the amendment before council tonight is just to end the budget amendment period effective this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Clerk. And Councilor Dodge will be moving that motion, and Councilor Williamson is seconding it. And Councilor Williamson, did you want to speak to it?
Mr. Chair, does this preclude us continuing to accept concerns raised by residents? Can we, are we still welcome now? I'm a little bit disappointed to this budget process that we really, I've heard from very few people about this, and we haven't had any delegations come in or anything. So, I know the mayor, and we talked about this at the previous meeting, did the town hall, and there was, we've done as much engagement on social media as we can. But if we do this, does it preclude members of the public from still expressing their views? Through you, Mr. Chair, to the clerk or whatever, whoever from staff would like to answer.
I will look for the deputy clerk to address that.
Yep. So, through the chair to the counselor. So, under the legislation, because the mayor presented his budget on October 28th, that then started the 30-day amendment window. So, under the legislation, the latest council could amend the budget would be November 26. So, you can still hear feedback from the public about the budget, or they can identify things that they want to see going forward. But for council as a whole, the last day that you would have been able to amend the budget would have been November 26, regardless. So, had council followed the 30-day window period, it would mean that after that 30-day window period, that then starts the mayor's 10-day period to veto any amendments. So, all this does is say that the amendment period's going to end, meaning council won't be able to bring forward any more amendments, and it just brings the mayor's veto period forward to start effective tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Clerk. Thank you, and I believe the deputy CIO has some comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. And further to the deputy clerk's remarks, while he has outlined the process in accordance with the budget process under the Strong Mayor legislation, there is currently a very big opportunity for residents to have their say in city services and infrastructure. That's our City Service Core Service Review, which launched this Tuesday and is open until December the 10th, which will be a key point in informing future, definitely, staff budgets and reporting to council.
Thank you, Deputy CIO. Are there any other comments from council? Seeing none, I will look to the deputy clerk for a recorded vote.
Just waiting for...
We have to speed this machine.
It's the longest five seconds, I think. Councilor Dodge?
Yes.
Councilor Williamson?
Yes.
Councilor Townsend?
Yes.
Councilor Stevens?
Yes.
Councilor Ratzlof?
Yes.
Councilor Phillips?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor McPherson?
Yes.
Councilor Lindell?
Yes.
Councilor Kushner?
Yes.
And Chair Garcia?
Yes.
And that's carried.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Clerk. So, we have one other motion, which is 12.2, which is Welcoming Streets Pilot Project, and Councilor McPherson is moving that. And do I have a second there, Councilor Ratzlof? And Councilor McPherson, this is a very lengthy motion, so I will not impose on you to read it all, but it's your choice. You can just comment on it and then go to the actual motions, your choice.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will not read the entire thing, but I will comment on it. It may seem unusual, this motion, because we're asked, the motion is asking the region to support the pilot project for the downtown area, including Meriton and other areas, the Welcoming Streets. And the reason I wanted to bring it forward at our budget meeting is because it will have an impact, if it is supported by the region, on the budget for all of our residents. So, that's why I just wanted to clarify why this motion is here. The pilot project, and I hope I can get everyone's support, because the pilot project, Welcoming Streets, is actually quite a popular project that's been used in other municipalities, Ottawa, Belleville, Guelph, Sudbury. And what it is, is the project is a peer-to-peer support project that provides outreach to those living and in our community, and in specifically, the downtown and Meriton area, who are often seen on the street alone, in need of support. And asking the region to support this because, as we know, it's not the role of our municipality to take care and support our homeless and those who are vulnerable in our community. And this project that is being put together by Reach Niagara and Positive Living Niagara will be the first of its kind in Niagara, but it will also provide that connection and that sense of community, not just for the businesses who are in the area, who often don't know what to do and don't know how to support, but it'll also provide an additional layer of connection and support for those that we often see sitting on our benches and sitting in the downtown, on our sidewalks and that. The project has been extremely, as I said, extremely successful in other municipalities. Also, it is in downtown Brampton, and the Peel Region supports it. So, I'm hoping that everyone can support asking the region and having our mayor and our regional counselors take this on and hopefully, bring it to fruition, because I think we all know, we see it every day, that there are people suffering and people in need, and this is just, this is another layer that will give that connection and provide that support. So, I'm hopeful, and I will not read the entire thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McPherson. Before I ask for other questions, I will just like to ask our CIO. We're asking the region to add something to their budget. Are we still on time in their budget process to submit a request?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, we are. I believe the mayor is intending, if the motion passes tonight, to bring it forward to the regional budget process.
Thank you. And just for clarification for the rest of council, when you ask questions or comment, clarifying my understanding that we're asking the region to add this to their budget, this is not in our jurisdiction, so there is no implication there that if they don't, we're going to support it because we don't have the funds, of course. Okay, Councilor Williamson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thank Councilor McPherson and Councilor Ratzlof for bringing this forward. This is something I do support and appreciate the spirit of it and see the need in it. And as Councilor McPherson has articulated, this is outside of our jurisdictional area of authority. And through the last number of years during the Ford government, we continue to get downloaded upon and continue to accept services and fill in gaps left by this government. And so, I would hope that we also add, and we know we're going to get a very sizable regional budget increase, which is also due to being a creature of the provincial government and the actions of the provincial government, that we ask the provincial government to cover this funding to the region. I don't know how we would include that in the motion, but I think it should be the provincial government that should be ultimately responsible for doing this. I turn on sporting events on TV, and all I see is government self-promoting advertising. They're spending money. I know I'm going on a bit of a rant here, but I'm just, I'm kind of tired of us taking the blame for the actions of this provincial government, doubling the Garden City Skyway, which we don't need down here, spending on highways in other places, and just their failure to deal with some of the crises we're having at the municipal level of government. So, I think it should be directed more to the provincial government than it should be the regional government. But if we can work that in there, I'll leave that up to the movers, how we could add that in. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Williamson. So, are you asking for an amendment that, to ask the mover if it's friendly, that the requests also be forwarded to the provincial government? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, please.
Okay. Councilor McPherson, is that friendly? Yes? Okay. Thank you. Councilor Williamson, I have Councilor Lindell next.
I want to thank Councilor McPherson and Councilor Ratzlof for bringing this motion forward. When I first saw it, I did a lot of research on it, and it is very successful in other municipalities. Councilor McPherson, Councilor Ratzlof, Councilor Miller, and myself are always hearing concerns, questions from people who have businesses in the downtown and in Meriton. There's concerns for the people who are unhoused, who need help, who are lonely, who are out there, and there's nobody there that they can count on, talk to, and connect with. So, this is a fantastic motion, and I think every single one of us should be supporting it.
Thank you, Councilor Lindell. Councilor Ratzlof?
Thank you, Chair, through you. Just trying not to repeat what's been said already, but yeah, Councilor McPherson and I have, we spend a lot of time in the downtown, obviously. We spend a lot of time responding to concerns. I met with two business owners today, one of whom said that there is, that one of the gaps is, like, often, he'll have issues where it's not, where calling the police will kind of raise the temperature on the situation. And NASA is really focused on housing, but there needs to be more support, particularly in our downtown and on the Queenston Street area, for situations where we need to consider the whole individual, right? It could just be mental health, it could be housing, it could be another support that they're in need of. And this project is proposing that we'll have people on the ground, people who already have rapport, who already have a relationship with many of the individuals who are needing a higher level, a higher degree of care. And I think that, you know, when you have a community-driven project like this, like this really has sprung out of the community that's already doing amazing work, right? The track record of Positive Living and Reach Niagara in our community is fantastic. They're the ones who are really doing the work in the downtown already. This is allowing them to kind of extend that work into the community and provide support not only for the vulnerable individuals, but also those businesses who need it. And, you know, just to manage expectations, like, this isn't solving the crisis that we're seeing, not only downtown, but in Fairview Park and kind of across the city. But even if the province was to step up today, the solutions that they would put in place, we won't see the effect of for years to come, right? We need to do something today. This is something we can do right now. Between Positive Living, Reach Niagara, the Downtown BA, we have the resources, and I think that this is, this is a step in the right direction. And yeah, I'm hopeful that we can gain the support of everyone at this council. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Ratzlof. Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I will look to the deputy clerk for a recorded vote.
On the amended motion, Councilor McPherson?
Yes.
Councilor Ratzlof?
Yes.
Councilor Phillips?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Lindell?
Yes.
Councilor Kushner?
Yes.
Councilor Dodge?
Yes.
Councilor Stevens?
Yes.
Councilor Williamson?
Yes.
And Chair Garcia?
Yes.
And that's carried.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Clerk. Moving right along, closed session, there is no closed session or motions from closed sessions. So, we have a bylaw motion. Can I have a counselor to move the motion? Councilor Phillips and a secondary, Councilor Stevens. So, the motion is that the bylaw listed on the council budget agenda be read a first time, considered, and passed. A bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its council budget meeting held on the 21st day of November 2024. One reading with respect to confirming the proceedings of the meeting held on November 21st, 2024, and that it be signed and executed by the chair and the deputy clerk. All in favor? That's carried. So, I have a, need a motion to adjourn. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Councilor Kushner is ahead of the game and a secondary, Councilor McPherson. So, that there be no further items of business, this meeting be adjourned. All in favor? Opposed?